Bridgewater Town Council meeting to order. And again, this meeting is being aired live and recorded. Can we please stand for a salute to the flag?
I declare it's Susan Black, you know, in the state of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, and do this all for liberty and justice for all.
All right. To start, we have a couple condolences we'd like to extend out to some veteran families here. First, to the family of Robert Peter Leclair. He passed away May 25th, 2024. Mr. Leclair served in the U.S. Marine Corps from 1954 to 1957. He was 86 years old. And we'd also like to extend condolences to the family of William Lawrence Owens. He passed away June 10th, 2024. Mr. Owens served in the U.S. Army from 1954 to 1956, and he was 87 years old. Can I please have a moment of silence for those veterans, please? Thank you, and we thank them for their service. All right. So we will start with approval of our minutes from our previous meeting on June 4th, 2024. Counselor McKinnon, you are absent, so please abstain. But do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Any... In a second. Thank you. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. I do not have any announcements from the president this evening, but we do have a couple of proclamations to make, so we'll start with that. The first one, I will read into the record. This is a proclamation for Margaret Wheelhauer. Whereas Margaret Wheelhauer began volunteering with the George J. Mitchell Elementary School Parents Association 13 years ago, when her daughters were in kindergarten. And whereas Margaret was the resident boxtop coordinator, cutting, sorting, and counting thousands of boxtops each and every month, earning the school thousands of dollars that went toward playground equipment, mini grants for teachers, special events, and so much more. Whereas Margaret was there for six years to set up, design, build props, decorate, sell tickets, concessions, and so much more for every single events gym spa hosted. And whereas Margaret joined the junior music boosters, it was an integral part of the success of the music boosters and music programs, as she is a relentless, advocate, and tireless supporter of the arts programs, and has dedicated all of her spare time to ensure that musicians, directors, and districts has what it needs for the students to thrive and succeed. And whereas Margaret was not only the board's treasurer, vice president, and unofficial historian, she was also the resident photographer, uniform mender, gift giver, community liaison, and many other titles. And whereas Margaret has taught future volunteers what they need to know to succeed, and leaves behind some very big shoes to fill. Now therefore, the town council, the town of Bridgewater, Massachusetts, does hereby declare June 12th, 2024, as Margaret Wheelhauer Day, to show the town's appreciations for all of what Ms. Wheelhauer has done through her years of selfless volunteer work. So I congratulate her on the proclamation and thank her for her many years of service. And we have a second proclamation that I will actually ask Counselor Chase to read. Counselor Chase.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a proclamation in honor of Quoc Walker. Whereas this year marks the 241st anniversary of the Quoc Walker case that effectively led to the end of slavery in Massachusetts, whereas in 1641, the Massachusetts Bay Colony became the first of Britain's mainland colonies to make slavery legal. And whereas Quoc Walker entered the historical record on May 4th, 1754, when Zedica Stone, pardon my pronunciation, mispronunciation, I'm sure, sold Mingo, Dinah, and nine-month-old Quoc to James Caldwell of the Rutland District for 180 pounds. And whereas in 1780, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts adopted a constitution which included Article One, which reads in part, "All men are born free and equal and have certain natural, essential, and unalienable rights, among which may be reckoned the right of enjoying and defending their lives and liberties." And whereas a promise to Quoc Walker of emancipation was withdrawn, he self-emancipated in April 1781, but was later captured, beaten, and imprisoned by his former enslaver Nathaniel Jennison. And whereas Quoc Walker persisted and again declared himself a free man and successfully sued Jennison for assault. And whereas Quoc Walker, a self-emancipated black man from Bear, pursued his court case for freedom over several years to the state's top court. And whereas in 1783, Massachusetts Supreme Court Judge, Justice William Cushing noted in his instructions to the jury, "The idea of slavery is inconsistent with our own conduct and constitution." And whereas the Quoc Walker cases contributed to the abolition of slavery across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts over 70 years before President Abraham Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation. And whereas in another Massachusetts court case in 1781, two enslaved people, Mum Bet, that's Elizabeth Freeman, and Brom, successfully sought their freedom from slavery, and their former owner's appeal was denied, an outcome likely informed by the Quoc Walker trials. And whereas in 2022, the Massachusetts Legislature passed a bill making July 8th a Massachusetts Emancipation Day, also known as Quoc Walker Day, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And now therefore, we, the Bridgewater Town Council, to hereby proclaim July 8th, 2024, to be Massachusetts Emancipation Day, also known as Quoc Walker Day, and urge all the citizens of the town of Bridgewater to celebrate the tenacity and audacity of Quoc Walker while building upon his legacy to make Bridgewater and the Commonwealth a more just place to exercise our natural, essential, and unalienable rights. I thank you very much, Mr. President, for the opportunity to read the proclamation. I want to extend thanks to Bridgewater citizens for civil rights, and also to Beryl Domingo in particular, as well to Becky slash Cudero, who had previously discussed this matter with me and urged me to bring it forward. I'm very happy to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. And just remind the rest of the councils, we do have that proclamation to sign. Make sure everyone signs that by the end of the meeting. Thank you again. All right. Moving on from proclamations, we have citizens' open forum. And I will say that due to Massachusetts Open Meeting law requirements, discussions will not take place during public comment periods. If appropriate responses to questions and concerns will be given by the town manager at a future council meeting, at a future town council meeting. And also, again, keep comments to three minutes or less. I'll try and give you a five-second warning if we're getting close to the end. So I would invite anyone who would like to come up and speak, if you come up, and please give your name and address before speaking. Welcome.
Good evening. Beryl Domingo, 36 Saddle Drive. I want to thank the council for putting this proclamation on the agenda tonight. Yesterday, this town proudly raised a Juneteenth flag in celebration of the emancipation of enslaved people in Texas, two years after the country abolished slavery in 1863. What few people know is that Massachusetts actually, as Counselor Chase had read in the proclamation, Massachusetts abolished slavery about 70 years prior to 1863. And this happened in large part due to two enslaved individuals. And it really warrants to spend a little time talking about them. Who are they and why did this? Why were they so motivated? Quoc Walker and Elizabeth Freeman, also known as Mum Bet, two individuals born in slavery in Massachusetts, they understood that the newly signed Constitution of Massachusetts in 1780, stating that all men are born free and equal and have certain natural, essential, and unalienable rights, apply to them, and that they should be duly freed from enslavement. Quoc Walker and Mum Bet believed that the right to liberty belonged to them as much as it did to others. Both of them, in separate cases, pursued their freedom in Massachusetts, where at the time, enslaved people were regarded as property and sort of as a way of life. Slavery was regarded here as a way of life. Of course, in Bridgewater, we also had families that had enslaved people in that period of time. So this really does have resonance here. Mum Bet, the woman, she's a black woman, was enslaved by a man named John Ashley. She won her case in Berks County Court of Common Pleas in August of 1781. She said, "If one minute of freedom had been offered to me, and I had been told I must die at the end of that minute, I would have taken it to stand as a free woman for one minute on God's earth." And that's how much freedom meant to these two people, as well as all other enslaved people in the entire country. Quoc Walker too was born into slavery, as you heard. He was actually promised his freedom at the age of 25 by his slave owner. Slave owner unfortunately died long before that Quoc Walker reached that age. Then the widow, the Caldwell widow, said, "Oh, I'm going to grant you your freedom at age 21." Unfortunately, she passed away. She had married before she passed away to somebody called Nathaniel Jennison. Nathaniel Jennison, then the widower, said, "I did not make those promises, and I refuse to honor the promises of freedom." And that, what did Quoc Walker do? He emancipated himself, went away, walked away from his place where he worked, where he lived, and the former enslaved slave owner pursued him, caught him, assaulted him, and brought him back. But that didn't stop Quoc Walker. He pursued his case through legal channels, and in 1863, he was granted his freedom by the Supreme Judicial Court of Massachusetts. And thank you again for your support on this proclamation.
Thank you very much. Thank you for that information.
Ray Ajemian, 221 Elders Road. I have two unrelated topics. One, I just want to add to what Beryl just said. First of all, I never heard of Quoc Walker. I'm a student of history. I have a master's degree in history, and I never heard of him until a couple of years ago. So I admit that. But I just want to add one part of the story to you regarding Quoc Walker. And this, the quote from here is from Peter Agnes from the Massachusetts appellate court today. "Quoc Walker cases stand not only as a monumental monument in history of freedom because they signaled the end of slavery in Massachusetts, but also a milestone in constitutional history." I just want to make a point on this. The Massachusetts Constitution was ratified in 1780. It states in Article One, "All men are born free and equal and have certain natural, essential, and unalienable rights, among which may be reckoned the right of enjoying and defending their lives and liberties that requiring possessing and protecting property in fine and that of seeking and obtaining their safety and happiness." That's 1780, folks. The United States Constitution was not ratified a decade later. In other words, this constitution, your constitution, which is probably the oldest living constitution in the world today, was the basis for the ruling of Chief Justice Kirk Cushing regarding Quoc Walker. The United States Constitution is based on the Massachusetts Constitution, which was written by John Adams, as you probably know. So I just want to make this point, that the Quoc Walker case is important for a number of reasons. Obviously, the beginning and end of slavery in Massachusetts, but also in changing the way we look at freedom in this country and the constitutional history. So that's one point I want to make. The second point, totally unrelated, is that I happened to go to a conference today on trees, because I'm part of the Tree Committee. And I just want you to know that they gave us a little award today. This was in Westboro. We can put this on our plaques when we get them, that we just, we were just accepted again as Tree City, but we were years ago. So we're 10 years as a Tree City, and we have a little plaque which has a sticky on it. I have no idea what to do with this. I'm going to give it to the town manager, because he knows what...
Thank you, Ray.
Get out of here.
Anybody else like to come up and speak? Citizens' open forum. Sam.
Sam Baumgartner, 60 Short Street. Good evening. This should only take me three minutes. I have a couple of points which, after thinking about them, they all came together under the topic of showing up. I happened to come across a Facebook video last week which showed little children at concerts, plays, graduations, looking around for that significant person in the audience to show up. And when they saw them, it was like, glad you're here, you know? So first, I want to thank you for showing up for people of color and the LGBTQ community with the recent flag raisings, and also personally showing up for those of you who were able to make time to do that, and also to thank Counselor Murphy for your eloquent and clear presentations at both flag raisings. Thank you. In terms of showing up, and keeping with the theme, I guess, of Quoc Walker, the last council meeting, you approved a new person for the DEI committee, which now brings the committee to two. I want you counselors to show up and try your hardest to get some more people on that committee. A lot of people worked hard to form that committee, and they probably were a little burnt out and didn't want to serve on it after they formed it. But we need people on that because diversity, equity, and inclusion will always be an issue in our lifetimes. So I hope you will show up to work hard on that. And finally, the last showing up is to pay very close attention to the NIP. I'm very concerned about what's going on there and the proposal by Claremont for the new hotel, and I want all of us to stand up and not allow any violations, any variances of any of our bylaws. We need to preserve that area. So please show up for the NIP too. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Mrs. Hanson.
Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street. I echo what Sam just said about the NIP. That is, it's very, very important. I'm not talking about anything as eloquent as everybody else. I'm here to, I want to hear what Mr. Dutton, town manager, has to say about the marching band. So I'm waiting to see what he... I was going to wait till the end so I could comment, but I thought I'd comment now. That's what I'm primarily here for. I'm interested to hear why they don't or can't participate in a parade, Memorial Day, Veterans Day, in our town. I'm not talking about anything beyond that. I hope it's not because of some of the things that I heard from some people, rumors are rumors, that it's the cost of a bus, that they have a cost of a bus to bus them from the high school to the center of town. I hope it's not that, because I'm wondering, how did they get to the center of town all the other years? Did we pay for it and then decide, they decided not to pay for it? Or did they actually walk? Did their parents bring them? In the horse and buggy days when my husband was a marching band, his mom brought him to the center of town. They brought them to the center of town, the parents. It's not that far from the high school to the center of town. So I'm hoping it's not the cost of buses. And if that's the case, what is different now that they can't? The town pays for the school. The marching band is that. They're a marching band, supported by the town. They should be able to participate in at least two parades at no cost or controversy. So I'm waiting to hear what he says. Hopefully, it's not about buses. I'm also interested in the charter of the violations, but in charter in general. I would still like to see the town council getting going on doing something about the charter that we worked on and finished in 2021. Haven't heard much about that. And it may or may not be a done deal, but I'm still going to ask if the town council can rescind, amend from five stories to four stories in the CBDR. I have driven around other towns. I've driven and seen three-story buildings, four-story buildings. You just can't imagine what five stories is going to look like in the center of town and elsewhere. It's just too big, which leads me also to the water situation. I don't know how, we're having trouble with water now, and I know we need to fix that, and we're going to fix it regardless, but we're fixing it based on what it is now. And I don't know how all this development is going to be supported by water. And everybody knows that we're having trouble. We're getting all those emergency calls, that the two towers are at their lowest. So I think a lot still needs to be looked at in this, and we just can't accept it just, okay, here we go, oh yeah, we're going to have all this development. And the last thing is, I noticed on the agenda, it says no town council discussion for what the town manager is saying, but we were told a couple of meetings back that if they list them on the meeting, the agenda, that it could be discussed. So I'm questioning that comment on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanson. Anybody else for citizens' open forum? Going once? Going twice? All right. Thank you very much for those that participated. All right. Yes, Mr. Lindy?
I'm going to ask that we consider taking, make a motion to take Vision to Reality update out of order under Presentations A.
Taking Presentations H out of order for a Vision to Reality update with Mr. Ruley. Okay, you're making a motion. All right. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second for that?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on the motions? All right. All those in favor taking Item H out of order, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We will move up Presentations and ask Mr. Ruley to make his presentation.
Thank you for the opportunity to give you an update on where we are with Vision to Reality. So it's been just about a year since we initiated this comprehensive economic development initiative. I think we've made a significant amount of progress in the last year. I want to give you an update on what we've accomplished since April. If you go to the next slide. So you've seen this before, most of you. These are the important elements that make up Vision to Reality. These are all priorities, objectives, and goals that were articulated in the May 22 Town Comprehensive Master Plan. We are focused on these things in their entirety with everything that we do with Vision to Reality. So when I hear comments with respect to five-story building, I reiterate, there's, five-story building can only exist on a lot that's at least 140,000 square feet. I gave you a second handout tonight. Rather than do the Let's Talk as a newsletter, we've been taping those on BTB. These are the backup to some of the slides that probably got a nanosecond of exposure in terms of the complexities of understanding the difficulty to do commercial real estate financing. I don't think there's any comprehension from most people in the public how difficult it is to get some of these deals done. So I encourage people, the link for that recording is on the first page. We had people from the development community, the developers that have purchased Pascal property. We had a senior commercial lender from Rockland Trust. We're just trying to inform people and give them the facts. If you go to the next slide. So things that we've accomplished and are accomplishing with respect to Vision to Reality, we put out an RFQ for traffic and pedestrian improvements in the central square area. We had three responses from qualified firms to that, encouraged by the firms that did respond. My staff and the DPW director will be conducting interviews with the responders next week, two on Wednesday, one on Thursday. In conversation with the manager, our goal is to have a recommendation with a firm to move forward by the end of this month, and hopefully have some preliminary engineering and design work done before the end of this calendar year. So that's an important element of Vision to Reality to improve pedestrian and traffic improvement. The next slide. Some of you may be aware, I know that this is everyone's favorite property in town, the former Pascal property, the Friendly's Assemblage. This was sold last month for $2.3 million to 2.3-acre parcel of land. Those are Boston prices for land. That is the highest land sale in almost 20 years in the Central Business District. So that just tells you, the good news is that we have developers interested in developing here that can afford to do this, but it also tells you that property values have increased significantly on speculation in terms of what can result from what we've put forth as the Form-Based Code and the zoning amendment. The next slide. These are preliminary conceptual drawings of what they're thinking. Their goal is to redevelop the bowling alley into a restaurant. The developers have experience with restaurants. They are proposing 12 to 14 for-sale townhouse units, and then also a mixed-use project along Broad Street, widening the sidewalks, first-floor commercial retail restaurant with apartments above and podium parking. All of that is, fits within what the Form-Based Code allows. They have not filed anything yet with my office, but I expect that that's going to happen shortly, and we'll move forward with that. As you all know, as part of the Form-Based Code, once the checklist is complete and filed, it will go to the planning board for 30 days for review, for them to offer their comments, and then staff will complete their review of the project to move towards either modifications to the application or approval. There was a question by one of your colleagues at a previous meeting as to where the CDBDS was and where the CBDR is. This is what's included in the zoning amendment in terms of the CDBDS is essentially the west side of Main Street, and then also the end of Broad Street as we go towards the East Bridgewater line. The CBDR is basically from Main Street, Broad Street, Spring Street, Campus Plaza, and Perkins Foundry. Next slide, please. I want to talk a little bit about the, there is a proposed project at 96 Main Street. There was discussion at this meeting, as well as other meetings, that what the applicant was suggesting they wanted for density was too much. I think it's important for people to realize, we didn't amend anything in the CDBDS as part of Vision to Reality. In fact, we strengthened it because we gave special permit authority to the planning board. So, I mean, nothing, this is, they could have done this project before Vision to Reality was ever talked about. There are 16 units per acre, and there are bonuses for affordable housing and for including renewable energy, solar. So I think there's a lot of bad information out there. It's really disconcerting to the development community. We go to the next slide, please. This property has been on the market for over 600 days at almost $900,000. It's beyond just repair. The purchasers of the property did a very comprehensive explanation of all the different scenarios to rehab this property, had a historic district commission. They'll do that again at a planning board meeting on the 26th at 6 o'clock. People need to understand that if the public felt so strongly about this, they could write a check for $900,000 and buy it. But there's not a lender that is going to lend money to rehab this as a single-family home. There's not a lender that's going to lend money to make this into apartments. There's not a lender that's going to lend money to make this into condos. I implore people to go to the Let's Talk video where we talk about financing. Look at the handout I gave you in terms of the complexity of what's involved to get a real estate transaction like this financed. Next slide, please. As we've talked about before, the Perkins Foundry project has been approved by the planning board. It's receiving its final approval from the Conservation Commission. They've gotten approval from DEP. They are finalizing their MEPA, their Mass Environmental Protection Act requirements. There's some remediation that's going to happen with that site, but that has all been approved. The reason I bring this up is that this is not what their original plan was. This is a plan that they redid after understanding what we wanted to see as a community as part of the Form-Based Code and the zoning amendment. I also want to point out that, and I've mentioned this before, that this project has been before the planning board for almost 30 years. that this project has been before the planning board for almost three years. The benefit of the Form Based Code is if the developer checked all the boxes that the community has articulated, we wanna see there's an expedited approval process. The three-year delay to get this project approved results in a million dollars a year in additional debt service. Cause interest rates went from three to north of eight. Those are real dollars. I mean, it's important to understand that the climate for commercial real estate development now is difficult. No one is financing office. No one is financing retail. Everything is housing-related. There is a need for housing, whether people believe there is or not. Housing drives retail. Housing drives hospitality. Housing drives restaurants. You need feet on the sidewalk. So I'm encouraged by the three projects we have before us right now. Uh, the scale is appropriate. Uh, the developers have all been conscientious in working with town staff and patient with the community, um, and I think that we're gonna be very pleased with what the outcome is. Next slide, please. Concerns about infrastructure. Yep, I have those. I, that was the first question I asked Mr. Dunton, Mr. Chase, Mr. Moore, and Ms. Williams before I accepted the job. I've been doing this a long time. I know the need for infrastructure. Something I'm concerned with on a daily basis. These are infrastructure expenses of almost $114 million based on today's numbers that are due by FY '30, whether we build anything new or not. I mean, this is, this doesn't even take into consideration additional development. I don't know how you pay for $115 million. I mean, you have a, the max of 2.5% increase on property taxes on an annual basis. There's people that don't wanna have MBTA communities approved, so we're taking that money off the table potentially. It's impossible. If you don't expand the tax base, you don't allow yourself to take advantage of grant money either on the state or federal level, you're not gonna be able to pay this bill or any other bills. We are actively looking at alternatives for water and sewer. I know that you have two meetings coming up to address that. I intend to give you an update on what my involvement has been on both of those issues. They're significant. In the manager's report from last month, I highlighted at a very high level what we're doing with respect to both of these. And those conversations are moving along. These are probably conversations that should've happened 10, 15 years ago, but they're happening now. These are not immediate fixes, but not all of the development that we're talking about is going to happen immediately. We have two new wells that, or wells that have been redone, they're coming online. We have sufficient capacity once those wells are online. But we also have alternatives, some that we just learned of today that I won't get into, that we're not as bad off as we think we are because we're thinking in a proactive way and not a reactive way. That is how we need to approach this. Next slide, please. I shared this at a previous meeting. I mean, these are just estimates in terms of additional tax revenue that the town can realize if we had full build-out at those sites that we've identified to be underutilized. So again, we know the Perkins Foundry project is going forward. We know that the Friendly's Assemblage is going forward. Uh, we don't even have 96 Main Street on here, but I'm gonna talk a little bit about 106 Hale Street in a minute. But we have potential for redevelopment. And we're seeing a lot of activity in the marketplace based on the fact that people are, wow, Bridgewater is a place we wanna be. I remind you that we have the highest average median income in the region, and we have a lot of money that's leaking out of Bridgewater because people have no place to spend it on. We don't have the type of restaurants people want. We don't have the type of retail people want. If we get quality housing, none of this is affordable housing. This is market-rate housing. This is housing for young professionals. This is housing for people 55 and older that wanna downsize. These are quality projects. So, I mean, I think it's important that people realize that. Next slide, please. I'm gonna talk a little bit about a DIF Downtown Improvement Fund, but this is just taking those numbers that I had on the previous slide and looking at a conservative way to do DIF funding, which is an opportunity for us to use future tax income to pay for public improvements. Water, sewer, roads. It's not to give a subsidy to a developer. It was mentioned at a previous meeting, we need incentives for the development community. That was the whole purpose of adopting the zoning amendment in the Form Based Code. Time is money to the development community. The developers that we're talking to will tell you but for, the but-for test is but for the Form Based Code, they wanna be here because the uncertainty is too much of a risk. We have developers that are borrowing money on a hope that the market is going to come back to them. That is a serious risk. I saw something on one of the social media that posed a question to developer, are you going to make money at this? Well, I hope so. I don't think any of us go to work for free. Developers take a significant risk. Somebody just paid $2.3 million for a piece of land that has been an eyesore. And I've implored them, they need to get out there and start cleaning it up. But at the same time, you know, they have to take into consideration what other site work they have to do, whatever, you know, permitting they have to do, connection fees. If you look at the end of the second handout I gave you, when we talk about new development, there are hard costs and there are soft costs. Soft costs are not something banks like to finance because at the end of the day, there's nothing for them to grab. Hard costs, if they have to foreclose, they can at least grab the land, the improvements. Soft costs are all at developers' risk. You can spend a million dollars on engineering and permitting and still not have a project. So I think it's important for the community, those people that think we don't need any new development, we don't have a housing crisis, we don't need five stories, to take a step back and take the time to understand what commercial real estate development and financing is. It's not refinancing your house. It's not taking an equity mortgage on your house. It's very complicated, incredibly complicated. It's definitely got a lot of risk associated with it. Next slide, please. So funding, we've made significant progress towards achieving some of these goals. Next slide. I spoke about the need to have the approval of the zoning amendment before the end of April so we could get in community one-stop grants. We have two in, one for $100,000 for technical assistance to develop the DIF downtown. And a second one for 1.8 million to subsidize the 2 million that we have allocated for the replacement of Wells 5 and 9, which have a total expense of $3 million. Now, there's also another funding request in for, uh, Clean Water Revolving Loan Fund. I don't know if one might cancel the other one out, but at least we had the ability to put the application in. The zoning amendment is in the office, Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, uh, like many other communities. But the, the good news is that we're able to submit these applications. If we hadn't submitted that amendment, we wouldn't be in this queue. So, and there's no guarantees, looking at what projected deficits are gonna be in next year's budget for the state, that there's gonna be money available. So, I mean, I think, very happy that we've got these in. Uh, the next slide, please. We also had good fortune that Congressman Keating's office reached out to us. He has a earmark into the US, uh, House of Committee on Appropriations for this year's fiscal year budget for $1 million for the preliminary engineering and design for the relocation of the MBTA platform. That is significant. And I've talked about it at previous meetings. Keolis is looking at having to do the crossings at both Broad Street and Plymouth Street. They're paying a lot of attention to where we are in this process because they, the signalization would need to change if we're moving the platform. This is a big step forward for us to be able to access this federal money to look at the transportation improvements. I sit on the MBTA commuter rail advisory board. Commuter rail is the only really functioning, successful part of the MBTA right now. The ridership is over 90%. They're, they're up and almost exceeding what pre-COVID ridership is. So that is a healthy portion of the MBTA. Uh, it's gonna continue to expand with the Fall River Line coming on, with New Bedford. So, you know, we're very excited about the fact that we can take real forward momentum in moving that platform to the Central Business District to support all of the other things that we're talking about in that area. Next slide, please. Also through Congressman Keating and conversations in partnership with Bridgewater State University, we're looking at creating a cybersecurity innovation center at 106 Hale Street, which is the corner of Plymouth and Hale. That would be a public-private partnership, uh, building on what is happening at the university. We've got a lot of interest already from the private sector. That would be the public-private, the private piece, uh, in terms of university contributes to land probably through the, the, the foundation. And a private developer would build the building, and that has an opportunity to be a real catalyst for economic development. The other thing that it does for us is puts that property back on the tax rolls, uh, which we get nothing now. So we're excited about that. We've got $500,000 that's been earmarked for the initial feasibility and, uh, design. Uh, we have meetings coming up in, in July with the university. We have some professionals coming in that have done something similar at John Hopkins University. So we feel very good about the opportunity to see this site redeveloped. Next slide, please. It also came up at a previous meeting and misconstrued in terms of what a business improvement district is. Business improvement district is, is just what it sounds like. It's something in, within the downtown area of, of a community that property owners or merchants agree to pay into a fund, uh, in order to, whether it's public safety, whether it's landscaping, trash, special events. The next slide, please. It's authorized under Mass General Law Chapter 40O. There are requirements that have to be met in terms of the level of participation, uh, for members of the bid and what the total assessed value has to be for the bid. I would suggest to you now that Central Square is nowhere near ready to be a bid. I've lectured on bids nationally for 20 years. In some instances, they work, some they don't. I think in the future, around the relocated trade platform with redevelopment of Campus Plaza, potentially, the Perkins Foundry, what happens on Broad Street, that's probably an area we're gonna wanna look at a bid, uh, where it makes some sense. But right now in the Central Square area, it, it's just not going to happen. Next slide, please. And these are the eligible activities that a bid can do. A bid can't buy a piece of property. I mean, that's just not what they do. And can't buy a piece of property that's not within the bid area. So I think, you know, again, a lot of misinformation on what things can be, can't be. I think it's important that people understand, these are the eligible activities as authorized by the state legislature in terms of what a bid can do. Under the right circumstances, it can be very powerful. We're not there yet. I mean, that's aspirational to think that we might be able to have this conversation in five or 10 years, but not a conversation we're gonna have in the next five years. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, comments.
Alright, thank you very much, Mr. Rulie, for the presentation. So I'll ask if there's any councils to have. Counsel Robinson, please go ahead.
Thank you. Through you to Mr. Rulie. Thank you very much for the update. This is, uh, very helpful. I have three questions. I think most of them will be brief. The first is the one-stop grants. When will we learn about?
In the fall.
In the fall. Okay, great. I, I think you'd mentioned that prior, but, um, in, or somebody did in the previous meeting. There were several numbers you threw out, and I know we have talked about water and sewer before. Some of the numbers that you threw out, and then what was on the slide, and then what was also said again. It kinda all didn't fully line up, um, and you might've been speaking quickly, so, um, I was trying to process it. So what is the total again? Is, because you-
Based on the water study that Environmental Partners has prepared in a draft form, cause I, has it been circulated? Hasn't been circulated yet. Just looking at their, those numbers that I had in my presentation are out of that draft plan that Environmental Partners has prepared, looking at today's needs, not looking at future needs.
And then, so in summary, what's the?
So doing nothing based on today's numbers, it's about $116 million to continue the upgrades to the wa, the water treatment plant, and then also whatever upgrades are necessary at the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay. And then you said $150 million at one point for? Or did I just mishear you? Did you say?
I don't think I said $150 million tonight.
Okay. I, I'll circle back on that with you separately.
Just for what it's worth, it's probably, it's, you know, these are like all preliminary numbers and, and it's, it's really order of magnitude at this point. It's not, um, not, certainly not precise figures, but it, the order of magnitude is in the over $100 million range. So, that's-
Okay.
That's that.
Thank you. And then, um, on the Pascal property, you mentioned that they're going to be using Form Based Code. Is this sort of in anticipation of it being approved by the state, so, or they just happen to like the?
Form Based, so there's two parts to what the zoning amendment was. The zoning amendment allowed us to meet the compliance numbers. We could meet those based on where the platform is now or the relocation. The Form Based Code does not need approval from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you for that clarification. I think that's really important to understand. Thank you. So I'm good there.
Thank you, Counsel Robinson. Any other counselors with questions? Counsel McGrath?
Thank you. Mr. Rulie, I have a couple of questions. On the commercial use on the first floor, it says that you can put two residential units there? The accessory uses and the off-street parking. It says conversion to existing structure into a mixed use with a maximum of one commercial use on the first floor and two residential units.
That's in the CDBDS. That is not in the CBDR.
So if we can put two on the floor, does it, so you can do 18, say you do 18 units?
Well, you can do 18 units per acre.
Per acre. So-
16 units per acre, I'm sorry. It's 18.
It's 18, yeah. So if you do the 18 on, on the floors, when it come to 20, if we can add two on the first floor?
Well, I mean-
The ground floor?
First of all, depending on what the size of the parcel is, if it was, say, a quarter-acre parcel, you wouldn't be able to do that many units because you don't meet the requirement for units per acre. And then we also have a height limitation that we allow. So, I mean, the idea is that, you know, we wanted to keep housing in the downtown area, in the Central Square area, but also at the same time, create opportunities for mixed use, which we didn't allow. You had to be the one or the other. So we think that if you have the opportunity to have first-floor retail, and we have some of that now in some of the buildings that we see on Central Square, but then promote residential for the upper levels.
But it will add a little bit more, more than the 18, because you'll have, we're not counting the two on the first ground floor.
Those aren't considered residential units.
But they can be used for residential too.
They could, but they're also, hey, I think we've written in there that if somebody was going to try to use those for residential, they have to have a higher ceiling height. They have to be ready to be converted to commercial at some point in the future.
I have a question about the density, uh, cause you have 18 units per, per square. But if the planning board allows for density bonus, you can go to 26 units.
That's correct.
I'm a little confused about, it says that any density bonuses from residential units would require a minimum of 10% of the additional units to be income restricted. 10% of the additional, so it'd be like 28 minus 18, which is eight?
So if you had 18 units that you could do by right, if you were looking for a density bonus, there's three ways you can get that density bonus. It could be historic preservation. It could be the inclusion of renewable energy. Or it could be affordable units, or any combination thereof. If you were going to go for the density bonus for affordable units, then you would have to meet that 10% threshold.
What would 10% be?
Well, on 20 units, that would be two.
Okay. So the other thing is you're gonna have solo panels on the roofs?
That is, i- in the existing ordinance predating Vision to Reality. That is, uh, an eligible density bonus consideration.
Are you gonna speak to the firefighters about, uh, concerns about the solo panels?
Sure. I mean, I, I, doing this a long time, I understand that fire has concerns with solar panels. They have concerns with batteries. Um, I think-
But it's just not the batteries. The solo panels are so heavy that when the fire is, there's a huge chance of the roof collapsing, which puts the firefighters in danger.
Correct. But new construction needs to meet both our local and state building codes as well as fire code. So, I mean, I think we've had enough experience nationally with the inclusion of renewable energy that projects are designed to take that into consideration.
And also that they stay energized even after sundown. So if there was a fire at night, those solo panels are still pumping electricity, and that makes it dangerous for the-
Yeah, again, I don't know what the requirements of the building code- Yeah, again, I don't know what the requirements of the building code are. Certainly, they have to meet those requirements. Our ordinance just requires, you know, has the opportunity for you to include solar if you're looking for a density bonus.
So the checklist that you talked about, are you the one that verifies it? That you check it all off, making sure?
So when the checklist is submitted and my office determines that it's complete, it then goes to the planning board for their review. So there are another review of it. And if they find that to be a complete list and they have their comments, then, then we move towards approval. I am not the singular approval entity.
One more question. Waivers, you, you can give waivers for the checklist.
There's, there is that possibility, yes.
Can you give me example of one of the waivers that you would give?
I mean, it, it could be that, you know, the parking requirement is X spaces per unit, but a developer can say, I can't meet that parking requirement onsite, but I have leased a parcel across the street where I have dedicated parking for my tenants for my businesses.
And that's what you call off-site parking?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Council McGrath. Any other questions from councils? Council Allenberg?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Ruley. You've been very informative. You say that conversations are happening now about water and sewer matters. Are they happening with the state? Is that what's going on or with the college or?
All of the above. And as I, in the manager's monthly report, I, with respect to water, the town is participating in a regional water study through the Old Colony Planning Council. We have been in conversations with the Department of Corrections with respect to redirecting wastewater. We've been in conversations with the state in terms of potentially increasing our discharge permit. We're in conversations with other municipalities about potential water. These are all ongoing pieces. The state has a small part of this conversation, with the exception of Department of Corrections, because they have the wastewater plant at the, at the, at the prison. But, I mean, we talked to the state about funding. We talked to the state about, you know, DEP in terms of some of their regulations. I wish we were having more conversations with Governor Healy and the Lieutenant Governor. They don't seem to find Bridgewater extremely interesting to come talk to us, even though we're doing a lot of great things. But, I mean, those are, those are things that are ongoing.
Yes, okay. Who are you, who are you dealing with in these particular departments? And would it be possible to find out who are the point people in these state departments?
I'm going to defer to, as I've shared with you before, if you're looking for something from my office, that needs to come through the manager's office. That's his choice, whether he wants to share that information. I don't find it helpful to have more people at the table that aren't contributing and are up to speed in terms of what those conversations are.
Yes, I understand. One thing I noted was you said the density bonus comes with historic preservation as well as renewables and affordable housing.
That's correct.
Can you tell me a little bit more about that?
Well, if you could do 18 units per acre and you wanted to do 24 units and you wanted to put solar on some of those units, then you would get a density bonus. Or if you wanted to have some of those units be affordable at 80% AMI, then you would be eligible for additional units. I don't think in the case of, if you're referring to 96 Main Street, historic preservation doesn't play into that because I think as it's been shown, saving that building is not economically feasible. And if somebody could find a way to make it economically feasible, they should step up and write a check.
Yes. And I know there are some citizens concerned about it. Perhaps they will develop things further. I have questions about the Recreation Department, but I guess that's not for Mr. Ruley at this point.
By the grace of God, no.
Is all, is that all, Ms. Allenberg?
Well, I just, I would like to be able to see as a counselor, working for my constituents, some of the letters and emails that have transpired between your department and the state departments, the state?
Again, I'll defer to the manager. And I'm not, I mean, my style is not to, that's just not how I operate. So if the manager directs me to, that's his decision. But if you're asking me directly, I'm deferring to the manager.
Okay. And is it appropriate for me to ask the manager?
Not at this time. I would send him an email on that.
Send him an email? Goodness sakes. Well, that sounds like quick decision. Okay. You know, I was going to say, I really, I don't want to be a heavy, but we've got FOIA, Freedom of Information Acts. So really, it would be nice if things could be.
Is there anything more regarding the presentation?
Yes. If the presentation substance could be?
Well, again, have that conversation or email with, with Mr. Dutton, and we'll see what he decides to do with you on that. Mr. Lindy had a question.
I guess through you to Mr. Ruley. Have there been any discussions with the city of Brockton concerning water?
There have been through the regional water study with OCPC. There was at least one meeting of representatives from our DPW and Water Department with the town of West Bridgewater, Rainham, and maybe East Bridgewater about the potential for accessing the desalination plant. I think it was one meeting and done. Personally, I don't think that is the solution for us. I think there are better solutions out there, whether those are within Bridgewater or other regional conversations. But there has been at least one meeting with the city of Brockton.
Thank you. That was what I was hoping to hear.
Any other councils? Council Strickles?
Thank you. Hello, Bob. I have, my main question is regarding parking. I look at the rendering and being in the business that I'm in, I understand it's a rendering, and it's just to give people an, a general idea. But what is the plan? I know that the plan is for a 200-plus-seat restaurant in the main space where the bowling alley was. What is the plan for additional parking? I do understand that the overall goal is to create transient housing so that people can just leave their home and go and dine and not have to worry about a vehicle. But there will be plenty of residents that want to utilize the facilities downtown as well. What is the plan for the parking?
I wouldn't refer to it, and I don't mean to correct you, but I wouldn't call it transient housing. Transient housing is what we have on Central Square above the flower shop. What we're looking at is what we refer to as transit-oriented development, where you concentrate housing around public transportation. In our case, that would be rail, fixed bus route, and microtransit. Prior to the community workshop that we did last September, we did an inventory of the amount of parking in the Central Square area. Some of that was street parking, some of that was church parking, some of that was, you know, CVS, Walgreen, public parking that the town owns or the university. We had a contest. We had an aerial of people, guess how many parking spots here for gift certificate at Roach Brothers? No one came close. We have almost 800 parking spaces in the Central Square area. You know, I've long stated in every word that I've been professionally, communities have parking management problems more than parking problems. So the Walgreens lot, as an example, on a good day is a third full. The Roach Brothers Campus Plaza on a good day might be half-full, probably not even that. So looking at the opportunity to relocate the MBTA platform to the Spring Street Lot, that is not going to be taken fully by commuters. But working with property owners and other institutions to have a parking management plan that we can utilize some of these underutilized spaces. Developers right now, because we don't have a plan in place, are talking to abutting property owners and are entering into formal lease agreements for that parking, which is something we're going to need to see in order to give a waiver for not having onsite parking. We can do a better job with parking. I mean, you'd be challenged to see the park here sign as you're going down on Central Square to know there's parking behind the gas station. So, but we're also, you know, looking at potentially when the fire station is relocated to its new location, which by the way, work started there yesterday. That, you know, that parcel could be demolished, and we've had some preliminary conversations, you know, with BSU about doing structured parking with ground floor retail. So, you know, we're looking ahead at all of those things. But to know that we have, you know, I'll give you another example. If you go behind Restoration Hardware, that whole block of buildings, there's all parking back there, but there's never more than two cars back there. So we just have to have a better strategy to address parking because one of the things that we want to do downtown is promote pedestrian activity. You know, now we have people that go to one side of Central Square, get in their car and drive to the other side. That doesn't help anybody. But the perception is, and why we're working on pedestrian improvements is, it doesn't feel safe for people to walk downtown now. And, you know, we know that, we need to acknowledge that. This development on Broad Street will help. I refer to downtowns as smiles. Broad Street needs dental work. So there's, it, it wouldn't feel safe to people to walk Broad Street at night in the dark right now because there's all these empty voids. So by putting people there, putting lights on, you know, I think you're going to see more of that. But, you know, I share with people all the time. I can walk from, and I'm not a fast walker. I can walk from my office to Campus Square, through Central, through Spring Street Lot to the campus, back to this office in 15 minutes. If you were in downtown Boston or you're in New York City, anywhere else, 15 minutes gets you about three blocks. So, I mean, it's a perception issue, but, you know, parking is definitely something we hear a lot about. It's a correctable problem. The fact that we have 800 spaces downtown? Hopefully, that's a long answer to your short question, which I'm good at.
No, no, that, that's, that's a great, great, great answer. My only other question is in regards to the Perkins Foundry project. I know you had mentioned that it was approved by the planning board. When can we, maybe I might have missed it during your presentation, but when can we expect work to start?
Yeah, so that's a little bit of a moving target. I know that the developers, Edwood Development, are hoping that they can start site work before the end of this calendar year, hopefully in the fall. As I said, they've received their DEP approvals for remediation. There is a mass EPA, they call it a MIPA, process that they need to go through. There are public hearings associated with that. I think they've had one scheduled, they have one more. They also are before the Conservation Commission right now, which is getting a third-party review. We don't anticipate any problems there, but we're hopeful that they can start at least showing some activity there before the end of the year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Strickles. Council Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I may, Bob, I just would like to firstly congratulate you. I did have an opportunity to view the YouTube Commercial Real Estate Finance Roundtable, I'll call it. I thought it was very well put together. I thought that there were a lot of enlightening comments that were delivered there. And I think that it's really a very good opportunity for people to take many of the strands of the conversations we're having here tonight and put them into context in a, in a different form. Because the present at that meeting along with you were Mr. Cormier and the developer for the Friendly's Assembly.
And Mr. Keen.
And the, the banker, whose name I've forgotten.
Mr. Evans.
Okay. And so you really do get a lot of, not only information about those various roles, but you can see the interchanges among these people. And certainly, it, it bears what you had mentioned earlier, Bob, with respect to risk and the need for a certain level of certainty when a developer approaches a project. And one, one last comment about it, it was interesting too. I wasn't aware of the fact, but apparently Bob Cormier, who was the broker, I think for the transaction, is a Bridgewater native and goes back several generations in, in Bridgewater. And that reminded me about the fact that that's the same case on 96 Main Street. The developers there were, were both Bridgewater natives and have, still have family members in Bridgewater. I thought that's kind of an interesting and, I think, very desirable kind of aspect to what's going on.
It's encouraging.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Any other questions? Miss McKinnon, do you have anything? Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Ruley. Again, most of the council has asked the things I was going to ask, so I have nothing else to add. But again, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right. We are moving back to item E, appointments. The first appointment that we have up is for Veterans Council, Kate Anderson. Would Mr. Dutton like to go over this application?
Thank you, Mr. President. I spoke with Ms. Anderson. She's also been through the CAC. Very excited and a great addition to the Veterans Council. And I'd encourage ratification.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second, thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor for appointment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And thank you, Kate Anderson, for your volunteerism. We have some reappointments coming up the rest of the way. Next up is a reappointment to the Board of Health for Guillaume Dogados for 2024 to 2027. Anything to add, Mr. Dutton?
Nothing to add. Nope.
Okay. Do I have a motion to reappoint?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. And second from Mrs. Robinson. Any discussion on the reappointment? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any, any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Thank you. Next up, reappointment for Conservation Committee, Wendy Smith from 2024 to 2027. Again, anything to add, Mr. Dutton?
No, sir.
All right. Motion to approve. Thank you, Mr. Chase. Do I have a second? Second from Mr. McKinnon. Any discussion on the reappointment? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, reappointment to the Cultural Council for Nora Tar, 2024 to 2027. Mr. Dutton, anything? Nope. Okay. Motion to appoint.
Second.
Second. To my right. Any discussion on the, on the appointment? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Reappointment to the Disability Commission, David Frim, 2024 to 2027. Nothing from Mr. Dutton. Do I have a motion to reapprove?
So moved.
Point.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the reappointment? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
One nay. Motion still carries. Thank you. Reappointments to Elder Affairs Commission, Nick Baggis from 2024 to 2026, and Gloria Lemieux for 2024 to 2027. I assume the same, Mr. Dutton?
No, I will say something here.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to point out, point out for the council's benefit that we're just trying, we continue to try to balance the, the terms for the, all the appointees. So in this case, Mr. Baggis gets a two-year term, nothing, it's no reflection on Mr. Baggis. And Ms. Lemieux gets a three-year term, just by virtue of trying to balance out those terms.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Motion to reappoint.
So moved.
Thank you. And second, Mr. Chase? All right. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of those appointments, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, reappointment to Historical Commission of Jeffrey Merriman, again, 2024 to 2027. Anything, Mr. Dutton?
Nothing here.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to reappoint?
So moved.
Chase, second by Mr. McKinnon. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the reappointment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And finally, reappointment to Transportation Committee is James Creed from 2024 to 2027. Anything, Mr. Dutton?
Nothing.
Thank you. Motion to reappoint? Mr. Chase?
Second.
Second, Mr. McKinnon. Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the reappointment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Oh, I'm sorry, I did. I'm sorry. Going back to H, a reappointment to Open Space Committee, Maureen Manasian, from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-six. Anything to add, Mr. Dutton?
Uh, nope, just to point out that this is another case where we're just trying to balance the.
Two-year term, I see. Thank you. Motion to reapprove.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion further on the reappointment? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And again, thank you to all those volunteers and we appreciate your service and I wish you the best of luck in performing the duties on those commissions. All right, next up. We have a hearing, which I will open a public hearing for General Ordinance D F Y twenty-four dash zero zero five, Men Chapter Seventy-four, Article Two, Storage of New or Used Tires. It is eight eleven. I will open the public hearing at this time. This was brought forth by Councilor McKinnon, which you'd like to talk about your ordinance, Councilor.
Not much to say really, besides the fact I'm just trying to permit future tire dumps to coming into town since it was allowed and just keep them neat and clean if you have one on your property now, in case fire and all that. And that's really it for me.
Okay. Anything to add to that, Mr. Dutton?
Uh, nope. I think Council McKinnon stated that very well. So, it's, it's really, it's really designed to prohibit future tire dumps because the current ordinance actually allows them. It's a change that honestly should have been made, you know, twenty years ago. But then, as, as Councilor pointed out, it requires those who do have, excuse me, house tire dumps on their property, they, they must keep it clean and accessible for fire, firefighting.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dutton. I will ask the, are there any general questions from the public regarding this matter? Seeing none. Does anyone from the public wish to speak in favor of this? Seeing none. Does anyone from the public wish to speak in opposition to this? Seeing none. Are there any further questions from town councilors on this matter? Yes, Mrs. Robinson?
Um, I'm actually for this, but I am just curious for learning. Have we had any incidences of issues or property damage, fires, et cetera, from cur, from current situations?
I believe predates probably most of us, but I believe there was an issue which was the genesis of, of the ordinance that we're now trying to amend. And that was obviously decades ago. We have one that I know of, we have one tire dump that is not, has not been kept in good repair. And so we are working, right now, we're, we're working with BSU to try to figure out, you know, if that tire dump is on state property or on private property. But that's the only one that's an issue right now.
And how will enforcement be handled?
Through the Fire Department and the Building Office.
Okay. Standard. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Robinson. Any other council questions? All right, seeing none. I will go ahead and close the hearing at eight thirteen. I just want to remind councilors that this went before Rules and Procedures and they voted three zero to recommend at their three eighteen twenty-four meeting. I will entertain a motion to approve at this time?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Robinson, second by Mr. McKinnon. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, this only requires a voice vote. So, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, I do not have any licensed transactions this evening. Presentations, we already did. So, we will jump to Town Manager's Report. And again, first part of the report will be addressing prior public coming items. We kind of made a little mistake at the last meeting, so typically, we won't have any council questions for this section of the Town Manager's Report. But we'll go ahead and entertain questions after we're here on the fire station update going forward.
Point of inquiry?
Yes, Mrs. Alberg.
I know we had the issue of no council discussion. Where has that decision been made? Is that your call, Mr. Chairman?
This is based, just in fact, this is addressing questions of the public that was asked.
Okay.
Based on their inquiry. So, this is what it's addressing.
Yeah.
The things that we're bringing up from councilors is listed below, so those are the ones that we'll be asking questions on.
Yes, except that we may not be on the same topic. And according to the open meeting law, we have to be on the same topic.
Will be discussions on the topics that are listed on tonight's agenda. No other topics will be discussed unless it's on the agenda.
Well, I asked for it to be put on the agenda, the Recreation Department personally, I asked Sandra Ward, or
Okay.
Deborah Ward, excuse me. And I was told that it's going to be on the agenda, but like, if it's not on the counselor agenda, then I can't address it.
Well, again, he'll address it based on what the, the residents brought up at the last meeting. And then, if you have any further questions regarding it, I would ask you to reach out to the Town Manager directly, either email or, or see him personally and ask questions to that way.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I ask your indulgence in the future, for future meetings, that counselors be allowed to speak to members of the public as a rule of procedure? And I think, Mr. Chairman, you could determine such a thing.
You want to have counselors talk to the public?
Or the public talk to the counselors?
No, I don't think so. Mr. Rollins?
There are rules and procedures, I'm sure you may have a copy of them. If not, I think you can find them online. Those are the rules and procedures that you all, as a board, have adopted. So, those are the ones that have to be followed. So, whatever those say are the rules and procedures of this body, in addition to any rules or procedures that are outlined under state law.
Yes, and so the Charter Commission will be looking at some of those matters, I think, but I was just bringing up point of inquiry.
That's not a charter matter.
That's just procedural for the town.
That's the rules and procedures of your body.
Of the council.
Yeah, it has nothing to do with the charter, other than the charter states that you all are to create your own rules and procedures, which you have.
Okay.
There are actual rules and procedures that have to be followed.
Well, we have our training coming up, as a matter of fact, in two weeks, so perhaps I will be clued in to what these things are.
Hopefully.
Yes. We'll go over that at training, and that's what I was going to suggest. If you have questions regarding that type of thing, we'd save it for training, when we have our training next week.
Just a quick question, clarification between the last meeting and this meeting. I thought the idea of putting these down specifically and listing them meant they could be discussed.
I actually said that to the, I actually agree with you. I think that is the intent, is when they're listed, you can discuss them. I think the issue you have here is there's a mistake on your agenda that says not for discussion. So, I think that's the issue that I see, at least based on the agenda. But you, you, I agree with you. I think the whole intent of listing something is so that there can be a discussion on it. What the parameters of your process are, are within your rules and procedures. If there are parameters that aren't addressed there, then that might be something for you all, as a body, to start to discuss and say, is that discussion time an appropriate time to discuss these matters or not, right? And so, as they're listed, as it exists based on past history, they're listed items under Town Manager's Report. I don't think there's a violation of the open meeting law because they're listed. So, but for the mistake that was made here that would tell the public via notice that there's not going to be a discussion on it, I would say you could have discussed them. But I think because you've now told them, here's the thing listed, but we're not going to discuss it, you, you're not telling them you're going to discuss that matter.
So, in the future, that should not be on.
If, if that's your intent, again, I don't know what your intent is. It's not my job to decide that. So, my job is to tell you what the rules are, and the rules are, you have to list matters that you discuss under the open meeting law. You have to give proper notice under the open meeting law. But in this particular instance, based on how that agenda was written, it's said to the public, hey, we're giving you notice that these things are being discussed, but we're not going to discuss them, right? So, that's the problem.
Right.
So, we'll go forward and I'll have a meeting with the Town Manager to how we'll handle this going forward.
And just, and just point of information, I had asked for it to be put on the agenda under counselor things, the recreation, and now it's on a no council discussion, so whatever.
So, again, we'll address it as is listed tonight and going forward, we'll see what changes we'll make.
And I will say that the agenda is set by the Council President. So, it is within the purview of the Council President to set the agenda items, regardless of what an individual counselor wants on the agenda or not. So, that's within your rules. That's what your rules require. So, again, I think there's a, there's a bigger thing than just saying, I want this on the agenda. There has to be a discussion amongst you all when you're setting an agenda as to what needs to be on there. And at the end of the day, it's up to the Council President what gets put on the agenda. So, maybe you do recommend an item, that doesn't mean it gets on the agenda under your own rules.
I guess more rules that need to be examined. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alberg. Okay, so, with that said, let's move on to the Town Manager's Report. Mr. Dutton?
Thank you, Mr. President. A few items of, of interest, I think, for a lot of folks. I too had heard the rumor that the school was somehow, you know, charging a fee. I can tell you, based on a discussion with our Veteran Services Officer, Greg Martin, he's, he let me know the primary reason that the band wasn't there was just due to the lack of time to coordinate that effectively. So, he did say, he pointed out that, that all of the Memorial Day coordination came together very quickly. He did a great job and, and really kind of sparked what I hope is going to be a new Memorial Day event. But it did come together very quickly. He was hired and I think it was about two and a half weeks before Memorial Day. So, he had a backlog of veterans' issues and then was also trying to plan Memorial Day. So, that was what he told me, was not anything to do with cost. But as he pointed out, we'd like to incorporate the band into a couple of different annual commemorations for veterans. And so, he will be reaching out to the high school for those, for, for those future events. So, so that, that is what I have there. So, as I say, I've heard that same rumor, but that was not the reason that, that the band was not, not present this Memorial Day. Lot of questions about the summer, Parks and Rec Summer Program. And so, I can shed a little bit of light on this. We did phase it out, and there were a number of reasons why. And I, I understand people's concerns and I won't, I, I'm not going to say that we had stellar communication between Parks and Rec and, and the rest of town. But that said, that's something I need to work on with Parks and Rec. But I will tell you, the Parks and Rec Superintendent recommended that we merge the program with the base program, Regional School District Program, which was offering this, basically the same, the same summer program with better facilities, better service. I, I had a personal conversation with the Superintendent. He was fine with that. The, another reason the program was never, ever properly insured. And, and part of my job, and I've said this before, one of my biggest responsibilities in town is to, is risk avoidance and risk, you know, risk analysis. And the, the liability associated with, with the summer program, you're dealing with small kids. And the, the liability associated with that was just way too high to, to justify a charge, whatever we would have to charge families to, to recoup that additional expenditure. In fact, given the facilities or lack of facilities, we were told by our insurer that they would not, they would not offer insurance for the summer program. So, that, that was a large driver. The program over the years, you know, decades ago, it served, you know, hundreds of kids. You know, it was dramatically shrinking in numbers. We did not have any indoor spaces that the program could use as a, as a matter, as a home base or a matter of right. There were no suitable bathroom facilities. The facilities used on occasion by the program was rat-infested. I shouldn't say rat-infested, it was rodent-infested and was also shared by DPW workers. And, and again, you know, a liability, a screaming liability for us right across the board. And finally, the program actually was a drain on the general fund budget. You know, as you know, you vote a revolving fund every year that helps fund the summer program, well, doesn't help fund it. It takes in the fees that we charge for the summer program and then pays for the summer program. Every year for at least the last ten years, we've had to subsidize that, that program. And as I mentioned, I've mentioned this before during the budget process, I've mentioned this before, you know, regarding this year's budget and next year's budget are extremely tight. And we just do not know that we'll have those excess funds at the end of the year to be able to cover those, those program deficits. So, in terms of notice, we, Parks and Rec did post information on their website and, and the office referred to anyone that called, or their instructions were to refer anybody that was calling to, to help guide them to either the website, to the base program website, or to the base program directly via phone. And that, that was their, that was their instruction. So, you know, it's, every so often, I make unpopular moves, but I'm looking out for the entire town in the best interests of, of Bridgewater and all of Bridgewater taxpayers. This was one of those cases where, you know, certainly, I knew it wasn't going to be a terribly popular move, but it, it's something that had to happen because it just was not, we could not justify continuing the program the way, the way it was being run. And that's not, that's certainly not any indictment of the people that were doing the hard work to actually run the program itself. It's more an indictment of the way that the, the program had been run for, for years and years. And again, the liability insurance was really an issue. So, so that is, that's what I have. I'm happy to talk individually with anybody else that wants to, more information or wants to have a broader discussion on that. I'm happy to talk to them individually. So, a question came up about charter violations. So, this is an interesting area. And I think the town, prior to my arrival, certainly struggled with this. And ultimately, the charter, you know, violations of charter are the same in this form of government as they are in, excuse me, a town meeting form of government, city form of government. It's either probably threefold. It's either filing a lawsuit to, to force some action or the ballot box. You know, if, if you don't like something that, that a council did, or a specific counselor did, you have the opportunity to, to vote them out or, or vote them back in at the next election. And finally, recall. I think the council has reviewed amendments to the charter and you have forwarded, I'm, I'm not sure if it's five or six different amendments. And one of those is, is refining and, and plugging in a recall provision. That's also another remedy for, for perceived charter violations. So, so really, those are, those are the, those are the remedies on those. And and I will plow right through Fire Station Update. Mr. Rully mentioned work started in earnest yesterday. I drove by there today and, and they are going great guns. So, that is off and, off and running. And looking forward to that. We had a, up, uh, I guess a question about businesses and residential areas. Talked to the building inspector about this. Without any specific complaint, he really can't give me any, you know, specific input. But I can answer that somewhat to say that zoning generally prohibits business use in a, in a residential area. However, just because, doesn't mean that just because there's a business in a residential area that it's an illegal use. There are mechanisms that businesses use to get approval for, for businesses in a residential area. You could, you could seek home business license, you could seek a variance, you could predate zoning. We have a couple of businesses, I believe, in town that predate, well, a number of businesses in, in, in residential areas that, that predate zoning. Those are allowable as well. So, we do have, you know, anybody that's impacted, adversely impacted by, by what they perceive as a, a quote-unquote illegal business in a residential area can certainly file a complaint with the buildings office, the building official, who is responsible for enforcing the zoning. And he will follow up on those. And I can tell you, I And I can tell you, I will tell you, he's got a number of active cases that he's dealing with right now on businesses in a residential area. But, but that is, that's the, that's sort of just businesses in a residential area in a nutshell. And the ways that some of those businesses are actually operating perfectly legally. And just because there is a business doesn't necessarily mean that it is not permissible. And then finally, a question, council brought up a question about the veterans district. I may not have reported this. It was probably in my update, but I have not reported it at this level. Rainham, sort of at the last minute after we had hired Mr. Martin, Rainham had decided that they were going to try to hire their own veteran service officer. And at least tentatively, that's what they are, what they are doing. So, and that's fine. That's fine. So I think at this point, we will probably propose better amendments to the admin code, which was what was in front of the council for first reading and went to committee. But I think, I think there are changes probably that would be more appropriate for us right now. And then also build in the potential for, for a district should a town, a neighboring town, it would have to be a neighboring town, decide in the future that to reach out to us and ask for, to form a district. So, so we're gonna look at the, at what's, I'm not sure if it got out of committee. It got out of committee, I think, with a recommendation. Regardless.
Yeah, I thought we were ready to act on it.
Yeah, you may have been. But we're gonna look at it internally and just possibly come back and propose some further amendments. But obviously, that'll be at the council level.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Any questions by the council to Mr. Dutton? Or if you have any topics for next meeting that you'd like to have addressed. Ms. Council McGrath.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the town manager. Mr. Dutton, on May 21st at the town council meeting, I asked for a presentation by the conservation committee. Have you set a date for that?
I did talk to conservation. I talked to Mr. Rollins. We run a real risk of, well, the conservation commission, while they're going through a hearing process, cannot come and give reports about, you know, what they're doing regarding that hearing. So that would certainly give whoever the applicant is in front of the conservation commission an appeal right. And so as soon as they are, they have dispensed with that, then we'll get them right in.
I guess I'm not, but I'm not really clear on the request. So is the request to ask board members about things that are within the adjudicatory process currently? Or is it just to say, "This is what conservation does. These are the things that we look at"? Because I know in the past, the reports have been more about explaining to you all what each body does. So maybe a planning board member comes and explains what the planning board does. But there can never be a time whereby the counselors call these parties who are on these boards and are engaging in the adjudicatory process, something that is way beyond your purview under this form of government, to question them about ongoing thoughts and conclusions that they're about to make that are going to be legal conclusions or findings of fact. So I guess it, you probably need more information about what you're looking for, because that will probably dictate what kind of meeting can actually happen, if any at all. But certainly, no board member is ever going to come before this body and explain to you all their adjudicatory decisions. If you want that, you could get on the conservation commission or one of these other boards. Then you would have the same authority to make those adjudicatory position, determinations. But you all, as a body, have no say over what conservation does, planning does, zoning does. You have no purview over them, and you have no say over any of their proceedings.
No, I'll tell you what. I asked, I wanted to hear their concerns on the town's resources, wetlands, plant and animal life pertaining to the proposed development at the Nip.
Yeah, see, that's a direct question.
So I can't do that? Okay.
Yeah, I wouldn't, there's no way that, because there, that's probably, is that an ongoing hearing? Is that something?
I don't know if it's in a hearing.
It's still, yep, still a hearing.
So then.
Even if it wasn't, they make a determination. That's an adjudicatory determination. Then there's a certain amount of time that the parties have appellate rights. And during that process, first and foremost, the thought process of a conservation commissioner and making that determination is actually irrelevant in terms of the legal analysis. The legal analysis is whether or not their determination was considered arbitrary and capricious. So there's never going to be a time where they're going to come here and explain to you all what their thought process were on any determination that they make. So if that's the intent, then certainly they can't do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I'll pick it up from there. But we do, after, as we get into the summer, you know, Mr. Ruley may have alluded to it. We're going to devote the July meeting to water issues. And our plan is to allocate time on the August meeting to talk about sewer issues and do a little bit deeper dive so that you understand all the issues swirling around both of those areas. And as we head into the fall, the September, the two meetings will begin to bring in, you know, all the boards, you know, whether it's planning boards, ZBA, CONCOM, Board of Health, just to give you a little bit of an update about what their purview is, what they do, how they do it, what their needs are. And those are things that are actually spelled out in the admin code. So it's, the expectation is that boards will come to you once a year, sometimes twice a year, and just give an update. Community preservation, you know, most of the boards will have that opportunity to come in. So they will be in.
Also, you, you as an individual citizen of the town of Bridgewater have every right to be at the conservation commission hearings and make your positions known and ask your own questions during those hearings. So I don't want you to feel as though you don't have a voice in that, just because you're a counselor. You certainly do. This is just not the forum for it.
Okay, so if, can I then, I've been invited by the developers at Clermont to come down and see their plan. Would that not be wisable because it's in a hearing with them?
I think we can have different discussions about.
Okay. That's why I'm asking, because I don't know.
Those are probably more private discussions.
Okay.
That, that being said, you're a citizen of this town. If the board is hearing a matter that involves the town that's subject to a public hearing, even though you're a counselor, you certainly have the ability to attend and comment at public hearings.
But don't go as a town council.
Well, it's different. If you're going as a town council, then we, and we have a quorum, you better post the meeting. Otherwise, you're all violating the open meeting law. So we could go down this road. It becomes a rabbit hole.
Okay. No, because they personally invited, like, I'm sure they invited other councils. I don't know. Okay, I'll stay away from all that.
Maybe.
My other question.
Yeah, are you all done? Council McGrath?
One more question.
Go right ahead.
So we can see how important the recreation center is, because now we don't have any buildings or anything like that. So I was thinking, maybe you could address that. Thank you.
Yep. I will, I will bring that up at your next meeting.
Thank you, Council McGrath. Councilwoman, you got a question?
Through you to the town manager. So a simpler thing in a recreation center is, I had a conversation with the town manager, but I definitely would like to see us have office space so we could meet with constituents at some point before the fall, especially with the meetings being less, just having a July and an August meeting. I don't want to necessarily go to a coffee shop. I'd rather do public business in a public building. So if you told me about logistics and if we can just address that at the next.
I mean, we do have meeting spaces within, you know, the confines of the building here. So I'm sure arrangements could be made for you to use one of the offices that are available.
Thank you.
Yes. And now the councilors. Councilor McKinnon.
Through you to the town manager. I just like an update on Stales and Hart. Just driving by there, you can tell we're gonna need curb cuts done. And I don't know if we're doing two curb cuts, one down below, one above. Then I heard something about a land swap process that's going on too.
Yeah, we won't be discussing that.
That's fine. All right.
But yeah, I can give you an update.
Yep. And then just the Perkins Street self-storage building. I still haven't seen anything from the historical commission on that being demolished, the demolition that they were gonna have. Like, the one time they had one, it was delayed, and I don't know if they ever redid it after that.
I.
Because I can't find anything myself, but the website can be difficult.
Yeah. I don't, I think, I don't think we've heard anything, as far as I know, but I'll, I'll report on that.
Right. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, councilor. Any other council questions or requests? Seeing none, I don't have anything specific, so thank you for that, Mr. Dutton. All right, moving on. We do not have any other discussions this evening. And committee reports. Does any committees have any particular reports they'd like to share?
The Budget and Finance Committee met tonight, and the Item Legislation for Action is gonna follow.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other committees' reports? Seeing none, we will move to Item L, Legislation for Action. First one up will be Order O-FY 24-041, Town Clerk Salary. Finance Committee met on 6/17 and voted 6-0 in favor of this. And Budget and Finance just recently met, and your disposition was?
3-0.
3-0 in favor?
Favor.
In favor. Okay. Anything to add to this, Mr. Dutton, before we?
No, I would only just point out for those that think you're watching, that the town clerk, I did explain this a little bit, that the, the town clerk's position is the only position that has elected positions, the only position that the town council actually has the authority to set up. Maybe easier, a number of years ago, we did a compensation and classification study for all the positions in town. And I came back that grade 13 was the town clerk's grade.
Mike, your mic's off.
Do you want me to repeat all that?
Spee away left there.
So the, sorry about that. The, anyway, we did a compensation classification study a number of years ago. Town clerk's position was put in grade 13. So the grade is based very loosely on a number of things, but basically the amount of authority and responsibility that that position has. So, so grade 13 is where the town clerk is. Mary Lee, former town clerk, we, absent, you know, other council action, we stepped each year the same as all the employees would step up the scale. And, and so now with a new town clerk and an experienced town clerk, just as we do with employees, we start those folks at step one, and they get to climb up the 12-step scale. So, so anyway, that's just a little bit of background. I just thought it would be helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Again, I introduced this as well. So again, that's exactly, you know, where we're coming from. Grade 13 was based on the position, and step one was based on the fact that she is just starting in that position. That being said, any, do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee. Second?
Second.
Mrs. Robinson. Any questions on the motion?
I have a question.
Yes.
Through you to the town manager. Has our town clerk been paid so far?
I believe I, she has, I'm sure. But I'm, I believe she was paid under, under the proposal. So there's no, I don't believe there's any drastic pay cut. But, yeah, we did pay her. That's.
Just to follow up, through you to the town manager, what happens if this proposal is not approved?
Well, then we'd ask you to vote something. Well, you would ask, you would actually talk among yourselves and determine what, what would be appropriate. So. And it's, and I will say, you know, for ease of, of understanding, she, the position is on the grade scale, same as all of us. But the council has exclusive purview. You could decide to pay zero. You could decide to pay a million dollars, although you'd spend a million dollars.
Make the budget.
We'd have to do something with the budget. Yeah.
Again, this was done by looking at surrounding towns based on our size and the pay rate that we established before was, was based on that. And again, the step is based because she's just starting off in the business. So that being said, any other questions?
Yes. I just have one question, and that is, what is the difference between the prior salary and the current salary in terms of numbers?
So I believe the prior town clerk was at step eight, and this would be step one. There's two and a half percent between each step. And I could try to figure that out in my head. So it was a differential of a few thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions? Seeing none, so.
Motion.
Motion. Yeah, have a motion or second. All those in favor of approving this order, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Next one, Order O-FY 24-042, Transfer Order Capital Appropriation Items. Again, Finance Committee met 6/17 and voted 6-0 to approve, and Budget and Finance voted?
3 to 0 to approve.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dutton, any summary of the, of the order?
No, other than to say that this is, we do generally try to do two capital orders a year. This one is the very simple one. It pays for the obligations that we have made in prior years. So we do lease purchases for all of our vehicles, just about all of our vehicles. And where you see a fraction, two fifths, four fifths, two fifths, that's year two of a five-year lease payment for that, lease purchase payment.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Chase, and second by Mrs. Riggles. Any further discussion on the item? Seeing none. All those in favor of the order, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Next up is Order OFY 24-043, Employee Liability Transfers Based on Contractual Payments. Again, Finance Committee voted 6-0 in favor on 6/17. Budget and Finance?
3 to 0 in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Dutton, any quick summaries on this one?
Nope, just a little bit of explanation. We have essentially, I'll call them legacy employees, who get paid a percentage of their sick time, accrued sick time upon retirement. And these are the obligations that we have for two folks who are retiring.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
And second. Mr. Murphy, any further discussion on the matter? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, Order O-FY 24-004, End-of-Year Transfers. Again, Finance Committee met 6/17, voted 6-0 to approve. Budget and Finance?
3 to 0 to approve.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dutton, any quick summaries on this one?
As, as I mentioned in Budget and Finance meeting, this is an end-of-year chore that we coordinate through the finance department. And it takes any monies that are available in, or projected to be available in line items, and then transfers it to line items which have been overspent so that we can balance the budget before the year end. And that roughly, I don't know, I think it's less, 1. something percent of our total general fund budget, which is pretty good. Some of the reasons that, that we may have an overage or we may have an under is often employees. In the old days, you had an employee, you knew exactly what that employee would be paid throughout the balance of the fiscal year. Nowadays, people come and go at the drop of a hat. And so we don't know if we'll have extra money in a, in an account and in a line item because the employee, that position hasn't been filled. Or we don't know if, if we had to pay more in order to get an employee to come work for us. So those are the types of things that get covered through end-of-the-year transfers. So, so it's pretty standard. This year, the total amount of money going back and forth is a million, just a little over a million dollars. I will highlight one area which I think deserves a little bit of a highlight, and that is Bristol Aggie. There are three lines for our agricultural schools. We use Bristol Aggie and Norfolk Aggie because Plymouth County does not have an agricultural school, as you probably know. We had an increase in tuition for $4,400, which was not terribly significant. The $189,000 is for transportation that in prior years, we never had to budget because the transportation was handled by Bristol Agricultural School. The 189,000 dollars is for transportation that in prior years, we never had to budget because the transportation was handled by Bristol Agricultural School itself. And our folks would go over the Rainham line and hop on the bus in Rainham. And, and that Rainham obviously is part of Bristol County, part of the Bristol County Agricultural School. So, we were able to piggyback off of Bristol Aggie's transportation. Because we now have more kids doing that, the Bristol Aggie has told us they don't have room on the bus. And so, we have to cover transportation to the tune of 189,000 dollars. That pays one year of transportation for, I believe, 11, 11 students. And then, and then Norfolk Aggie was 58,000 dollar increase, and that's just an increase in the number of students going to Norfolk Aggie. So, the way it works, not to get too far into the weeds, but the way it works is that we base a budget on our best estimate on, in April or prior to April, starting in January, but filed in April on who, our best estimate on who is going to be attending the Ag school. So, the Ag school's very, very good about sharing information, you know, the current number of students, which tells us, okay, if there are, you know, sprinkled through the four grades, if there are, you know, 10 students, there are going to be three that are graduating, we know we'll have seven. And then we really, at that point, we're guesstimating on, on how many students we'll have. We don't know how many students until the October 1st census, well after the new year has started and the budget's been voted, so. So, this will always be sort of a floating number. Hopefully, transportation will not be a surprise to us in the future, but it won't be. But, but we don't always know exactly how many students are, are attending those, those schools, so.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Chase, seconded by Mr. Lindy. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next up, Order O-FY 24-045, Acceptance of Grant for Council of Aging Massachusetts Home and Community-Based Services. Finance Committee approved this 6-0 at the 617 meeting. Budget and Finance?
3-0 approved.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Dutton, any descriptions on this one?
Nope, this is the second grant that helps support the continuation of our dementia program, our dementia-friendly senior center, and the programs that Emily Williams has got going on down there.
Very good, this was for a little over 100,000 dollars. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
So, Mr. Murphy, and Mr. Murphy for the second, any further discussion on the motions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. And final order of the evening is O-FY 24-046, Transfer Order Rebinding of the Death Records Book. Finance Committee voted 6-0 to approve this at their meeting on 617. Budget and Finance?
3-0 to approve.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Dutton, a quick synopsis on this one?
Really not a whole lot, I think it's all in your, in your packet, but community preservation, this was an application for funding to the Community Preservation Committee, and the Community Preservation Committee voted favorably and, and has forwarded that along for your appropriation.
Thank you, do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Lindy, seconded by Mr. McKinnon, any further discussion on the matter? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. All right, that sums up Legislation for Action. Item M, Old Business We Have None and New Business We Have None as well. And that brings us closer to the end of this meeting, so. I will bring up citizens' comments, and again, just remind all those, due to Massachusetts Open Meeting Law requirements, discussions will not take place during this public comment time. If appropriate responses to these questions, concerns will be given by the town manager at a future town council meeting. And again, please keep comments to three minutes or less. Please step on up, Mr. Dutton.
Ray, again, I neglected when I first came up to thank Councilor Chase for his well-thought-out proclamation on Quack Walker. I think it's very important that you as a group, obviously, take care of the town in terms of police, fire, and so forth, but also take stands on human rights. And that was a very well-thought-out proclamation that I hope you abide by it and we do things like this in the future, thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Any other people for citizens' comments?
Hi, Gina Gasconi, 35, while, I've spoke before you the last two council meetings, one of these times I'll stop talking. Speaking for the Summit Recreation Program. And again, as at the last two times I spoke, I'm speaking personally, not representing the Paxton Recreation Commission, even though I'm sure they'd agree with me. Thank you, Mr. Dutton, for your report. However, I don't agree a lot of the things which you know. I'd like to refute a couple of. Rotan infestation, yes, it was. I'm sure everybody's had mice in their house at some point. You cleaned it up last year, working with the Assistant Town Manager, everything was cleared up, new equipment was bought. So, unless it's been a new infestation this year, if we're talking about in the past, that was all taken care of and new equipment was bought. For subsidizing money, I would like to, to ask for, I don't know if I can ask the town manager, I'm sure if somebody else does, but I would like to request a cost analysis profit-loss for the last five years, because we've been told Paxton Rec by our director that the program broke even. So, I'm just curious, our cost analysis liability, it's a town program, so would the town liability cover it? Years ago, we had an incident through the summer program, a child got hurt, parents sued, their town's liability paid it. Paxton Recreation didn't have to have a separate liability. So, I'd like to hear that addressed, why it would fall under the town umbrella policy. It still wasn't answered, who made the decision? It said the director, our superintendent recommended it. Did he recommend on his own, was it whoever in the town was looking at it, went to him, he agreed? Just more information on that. As I've said, I'm just disappointed with the whole program, I'm still having parents ask me why it was canceled, why it was, and the term used tonight phased out. My last thing on that, my last thing on that is the function of not just Paxton Recreation, but all boards committees, commissions, if you look at the administrative code, whatever it's called, that, in this, the example of Paxton Recreation, Paxton Recreation Commission advises the town manager through the superintendent. I accept his apology that Paxton Rec wasn't consulted, but I think that code needs to be looked at. And lastly, I'm at the end, off of.
Please wrap up quickly, Gina.
Off of that, I, I just want to thank the commission for their support for the community preservation.
Thank you, Gina, thank you so much.
Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street, just have a list, you talked about Brockton Water, I don't understand that aspect, because I work in Brockton, I have a lot of friends from Brockton, nobody wants to drink Brockton water, you know, they, they refuse. So, I'm kind of questioning that relationship. The MBTA, as far as I know, this is still not a done deal. Apologies to Mr. Rully, but he makes it sound like it's a done deal. It's not a done deal, it doesn't have to be moved, I, I really feel that it needs to be investigated further. There was a reason why it wasn't put where they want to put it now, and you have to look back in 1990s, you know, when this was done, there was legitimate reasons why it could not be put where it is, so that has to be looked at, it's not a done deal. And I haven't listed. I also wanted to know, he mentioned improvements in Central Square for roads and pedestrians, but it wasn't elaborated what those could be. I want to know, and will the public have any input on that? And, sorry, I lost my train of thought here. I just feel like the residents don't seem to have much say on anything anymore. I myself, I get up here and talk, but I honestly, I don't feel like anything I'm saying does anything, but I keep coming. And I just, I do feel that, I was wondering, where does the golf course money go? I thought that some of that money was supposed to go help support the recreation for children, kids. So, you know, what's happening with the income from the golf course? And, and I think it is good that you're going to have the boards speak in the fall, but I believe that's part of the administrative code, or I remember seeing it, that the boards are supposed to come before the town council, at least, you know, once a year, if not twice a year. So, that's nothing, you know, that should be done, but it hasn't been done in a long time. And, oh, the CBDS, he mentioned that, Mr. Rully had mentioned that there was no changes in that, there was. And the one that sticks, I can't think of other specifics, but I know the demolition was a new one and that was addressed by town council, the town manager last time. But he, he said that there was no changes and that's not correct. So, it's just, I have so many little notes, but I just question the, I just feel like residents aren't with this new form-based code, are going to have any say as to what is allowed, not that we're restriction, but we do have to have checks and balances to make sure things go correctly. And with this check-off list, I just feel like we're not going to have any say, something's just going to go in and it, tick, 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 it's all done. And I just think we do have to watch things closely and not just take it because it's going to be developer and coming in. And, I know, five seconds. So, I just, there's a lot of hair, but those are my lists of things, I might have left off one because I was scribbling all over the place, but thank you very much for everything.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanson. Anybody else like to come up and speak? Please come up.
Good evening, thank you all, I'm Bob Cormier, 65 Grange Park, thanks for the shout-out earlier. So, we'll start with the perceived conflict of interest here, I was the broker on the friendly assemblage. I brought the developer to town, I'm born and raised here, I wanted to have an active approach in actually improving our downtown. I have three girls I'm raising here, my wife's a teacher in the district, my grandfather was a selectman, my mom still lives in the house I grew up in. I just don't like to leave things to chance, so I'm sure some of you saw, I took to the community Facebook pages where a lot of folks engage and gave a comprehensive update. I really want to address kind of the misinformation that's, that's floating around, so my, my name, my cellphone, my email is on that post, I just gave you my address, I'm not hard to find. Please reach out to me directly with questions, let's not let the rumor mill kind of create something that's not there. Just a couple of things from Mr. Rully's presentation. Number one, the economic impact, I think he did a great job highlighting the tax implications, it's not complicated math. The Broad Street assemblage has contributed $14,700 in annual tax revenue. That's horrible. Before we even get new assessed value on that, on that land, which would be roughly 220,000 in year one, it's $400,000 in sewer tie-in fees and permit fees. So, it would take 27 years of the current tax revenue to even generate what we're going to generate before we go vertical. So, when we talk about 100 million dollars in infrastructure improvement, where do we think that's going to come from? Now, I think it's our job as, as citizens of the community to hold the council and Mr. Dutton and the various committees accountable for the appropriation of those funds, but that's the reality of what's being generated. The other comment I'll make is the renderings, they were shared tonight, that's great. I want to reiterate, as I said in my communication in written form, this is a very fluid process. The current design does not look anything like that. The, the goal is to have more street frontage retail, so what you saw is a very large, long building, that's not where the project is going. So, it's, it's a very early rendering, and I'll continue to share updates once they get more finalized, we're at a full sprint with civil engineering and architecture, so it's moving very quickly. And I, I think that's, oh, last thing I want to leave you with, to address you, Ms. Riggles, on parking. So, right now, the current plan, that is our number-one priority, to have sufficient parking on-site. There are some limitations, of course, we're working through that, it's my number-one priority to try to find other solutions. I've engaged with every butter, every off-site opportunity, I'm very confident we're going to get there, particularly for restaurants. So, the residential parking is more than adequate that we have on-site with some additional parking for retail. But like I said, it's, it's a number-one priority to be able to do that. Particularly when, you know, the developers themselves are going to have ownership in the restaurant, they want to make sure they can park their own restaurant. So, that's, that's the goal there, we have some very viable solutions, one of which being Bluestone. What I, what I want to say about parking, somebody didn't like my comment about off-site parking for restaurant space, we have to look at Bridgewater as a transit-oriented town, right? If you look at Portsmouth, New Hampshire, Amesbury, Winchester, all these beautiful, charming New England towns, there are no large central parking areas. They're very walkable, it's very normal to park with my family, put my kids in a, in a stroller and go walk 100 yards to go to a restaurant. So, we just have to rethink what that looks like. But anyway, you know where to find me, thank you for the time, appreciate it.
Thank you, Bob, appreciate it. Anybody else, citizens' comments? No ones, no one talks. All right, thank you, everyone, for, for sharing your, your thoughts. All right, let's move on to council comments. Today, I'll start to my left with Council McGrath.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to say congratulations to the eighth graders of the Bridgewater Middle School. At the promotion ceremony on June 13th, the eighth graders were officially promoted to the ninth grade.
Thank you, Council McGrath, Council Riggles.
Thank you, I just wanted to extend a happy Juneteenth tomorrow and thank the Planning Committee for an amazing flag-raising ceremony yesterday. It was very well-attended, it was windy and a little warm, but we made do. And I just encourage everyone to come out to University Park at Bridgewater State on Saturday from 1:00 to 6:00 for Freedom Day. And since we don't have another meeting before the 4th, I want to wish everyone a happy 4th of July.
Thank you, Council Riggles, Council Chase.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, Sean, you, you've taken the two comments that I wanted to make. I did attend the flag-raising yesterday for Juneteenth and it was, it was a very enjoyable event, as always. There were some tremendous speeches delivered and I think it, not unexpectedly, all went very, very well and I was happy to have an opportunity to be there. And again, certainly with respect to July 4th, it's our last meeting before the holidays, so I want to wish everyone in advance a very happy holiday. Hope everyone can partake in the fireworks and other festivities planned for the town. And I'm sure you will find them very enjoyable. I will repeat my annual wish that no one in the town who is not capable of engaging in commercial fireworks displays should plan on shooting fireworks. Please leave that to the professionals and we don't want to hear about unfortunate incidents. But certainly, the holiday is, is going to be a very enjoyable event for everyone, I'm sure, and I wish everyone a wonderful time. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Chase, Council Lindy.
I just want to echo the comments about Juneteenth, I attended yesterday and I also got a chance to go to the gospel concert that happened on Sunday, which was phenomenal. So, the third one is the Juneteenth celebration itself. Just want to remind everybody, I think they're close to their goal, but I think the 4th of July committee is still raising money. There is a Juneteenth fundraiser tomorrow night at Black Hat for anybody that wants to support that. I do want to thank, in, in reference to Janet Hanson's comments, I thank you for coming here. I, I do listen, we do listen to what you have to say and we want citizen participation like we always have, so I truly appreciate that. We'll get some of our logistics worked out, we have a training next Tuesday for all the counselors on, you know, the charter, the administrative code, different things like that, conflict of interest law. different things like that, conflict of interest law, and, uh, make sure everybody has taken their ethics training. I took care of mine right away. Um, and, uh, I want to thank my new two members of the Budget and Finance Committee, Mr. Chase and Ms. McGrath, for a great first meeting. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Council Murphy?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to the BCCR folks again, uh, echoing the comments of the previous counselors for yesterday's event. Had the honor to speak there. Uh, it was a tremendous event. Uh, really enjoyed it. Was just talking to Dr. Perry about it before the meeting and how great it was. Uh, also, uh, hope that everybody attends on Saturday as well, too. Uh, and then I just wanted to make an additional comment, uh, perhaps to, uh, Mr. Dutton. I think, you know, a lot of what we hear tonight and, and at other meetings is really just a lack of communication from the town. I think we have so much improvement ahead of us on communication as a whole from our town. Uh, I think a lot of what the citizens bring to us is just a lack of knowledge or understanding of some, uh, some of these ideas, and I would love to see us really find a path on how we can communicate better to folks. And I think you, you've done that through, um, some of the town manager reports, which can be helpful if you have the time to sit down and read through those. Uh, but we have to find a way to get information to folks quickly and efficiently, um, because there are a lot of good things happening in Bridgewater, and I think we don't recognize that enough. Um, I think the summer recreation program is an example of, you know, folks just wanting to know what is happening and, and decisions that are being made around that. Uh, the same thing goes for the Veterans District. That was something that I've asked for as a town counselor. I was unaware that, you know, Rainham had backed out, and so, uh, as a town counselor, if I'm unaware, I'm assuming that most of our citizens are unaware of that. Um, and really, the only communication that comes from the town is, is for us to not turn our hoses on or, or something dire of that in nature. So, um, I think, you know, it's something that affects me as a town counselor now, uh, that, you know, folks are just unaware of some of these projects and, and good things that are happening. So how can we find a way to, uh, to highlight these things and address these things, but get information to folks quickly and efficiently so they have the time to get those updates? Um, but that's it for me. Happy Fourth to everybody looking forward to the display as well, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Murphy. And Council Ellerberg?
Yes, happy Juneteenth tomorrow, happy Fourth of July coming up, and I wanted to say I appreciate the citizens coming to this forum, and I think that we need to, with the administrative code, uh, perhaps change some of the committees from advisory, mere advisory, to ministerial, but that can be worked on in the future, and thank you for raising those issues tonight. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Council Ellerberg. Council Robinson?
Uh, thank you. I have a few, few thoughts. Um, first, congratulations to, um, all of the appointees, and thank you so much for volunteering for the various committees you were appointed to. Um, to the planning committees and, uh, and to others, my apologies, I have not been able to attend the, the pride flag-raising due to a work conflict, and then Monday I had to bail last minute due to a family emergency. Um, but thank you very, very much to BCCR for, um, being very welcoming to the guests that I had invited to meet me there. Um, so thank you for that. That was really, really appreciated to, to welcome someone else from outside our community. Um, and I do want to echo the sentiments as well around, um, some of these public comments, and Janet, as a specific shout-out, you are being listened to. You have asked questions, you know, particularly around the form-based code ordinance that some of us had not thought of, or, you know, you would really ask for more clarity and thoroughness, so, um, please do know that you are being heard and, and are very appreciated. Um, and thank you so much, uh, Mr. Cormier as well, Bob. Um, as the chair of the CED Committee, this is really, really interesting to me, just to flex different muscles and learn different things, and so it's great to learn from others who are experts or actively in the development community. So thank you for sharing publicly around, um, information so that we can be as factual and accurate as possible. Um, because I, I think what also, um, was coming through on that message is that there are people who are reinvesting back into Bridgewater, who are from here and who want to see this town be successful and grow in ways that can be win-win situations for all involved. So, um, so that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Robinson. Council McKinnon?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a little quick catch-up since I was out of state last, uh, meeting. Um, I want to thank the VSO for the great Memorial Day Parade. Thank you for your speech and all the Bridgewater firefighters that had one, uh, at the Pride Day Flagpole. You did great for your first public speech. I wasn't, uh, available to be there yesterday. I was with BTV filming a show that we do, and then, uh, what's it I want to say? We didn't jinx it this year, Mr. Chase. Last year, when, when you were president, we talked about the duck boats coming to town. We didn't jinx that, and I can say, Ms. Strigles and Mr. Cormier over there, I hope you guys had the time of your life, because I saw you guys were both in the garden last night, so that's awesome. And, uh, happy Fourth of July for when it comes, as I said last year, around that time, with the good times roll. Summer is here, and, uh, happy Juneteenth tomorrow. And, uh, I think I'm hitting it all, and just one last thing, I just want to send the condolences to the Fortune family in town who just lost, uh, their son in a tragic accident in Middle Bar. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKinnon. Uh, echoing a lot of the sentiments that the, uh, the other counselors had, um, mentioned already, do you want to thank all the appointees again for stepping up and, and volunteering? Uh, the town can't function without their help and, and volunteerism on those committees, and we still need more. So please, uh, consider joining if, uh, you have an interest in any of those committees. Um, I want to thank the BCCR for all their work and efforts. A lot, a lot of action going on this past month for you guys, so, um, I unfortunately couldn't make, uh, the flag-raising yesterday, but my vice president, uh, was there. My son gave a great speech. I will be speaking, uh, at the Saturday event, so I look forward to that.
Good luck keeping up.
[laughing] He's a pretty good speechwriter. Give him props. I'm gonna have to see what I can do.
He is.
I was gonna hire him as my speechwriter, but he hasn't accepted the position quite yet. Um, again, obviously, we're not meeting in, between now and the Fourth of July, so again, uh, wish everyone a very happy and safe Fourth of July. Uh, I believe the committee is still looking for donations, as mentioned, so please, if you can give a little bit to help, uh, support, everything that they do is completely, uh, uh, supported by the townspeople, so if you can, if you haven't given, you can give a little bit. I'm sure they would appreciate it. Um, I do want to also extend condolences, as, uh, mentioned by Council McKinnon, to the Fortune family, the very tragic accident. Um, and my heart goes out to their entire family. He was, uh, born and raised here, and, uh, certainly, uh, sad to see such a tragedy happen. Um, and finally, again, thank all the, all the folks coming out tonight. Again, your input, your, your, uh, comments, uh, not, are not, not heard. Um, double negative. Um, but we do appreciate all, all the input that you give us. You know, this is how our, our, our government works, um, and you all have a voice, and so don't ever think that you don't have a voice, because this is the design of it, and this is how you communicate with us, and we'll take the information, do the best we can to make the town, uh, work and be, uh, as, as good as it can be, uh, which, you know, again, leads to the, you know, the presentation tonight. Well, I thank Mr. Ruli for his presentation. Um, thank Bob Cormier, who's here, and his group that's working on Broad Street. Uh, finally, we're gonna have something, hopefully, there in the near future that's gonna be a benefit to the town. Uh, and, and again, a well-lit area that someone can walk down the street safely, um, some businesses that we can support. Um, you know, it's all part of a, of a plan that's gonna be a benefit to the town, not, not a detriment. Um, so keep your, your mind open, keep your hearts open. Uh, we're only trying to do the best we can to make Bridgewater the best it can be. So that's all I have for tonight. Uh, we do not need executive session, so I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you so much for coming.